Combined work session, combined regular work session, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Who's trying to be in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice.
Okay, we got Commissioner Williams on television there. Can you guys hear me okay? Yes, we can. Alright, perfect, just wanna double check. Okay. Uh, no need, are there any additions or deletions?
Yes, I do not have any deletions and I have several additions. We have the CSRFR grant agreement, building department update, ODOT type-one delineators with target herbicide material for road departments spray program.
Okay. Alright, we'll try to plow through it. We also have a time gap at ten AM with the traffic range. Okay, uh, let's start us off with Daniel Tag and the CSRFR grant agreement.
Hello, Daniel Tag. Good day. So yeah, since the summers of last year, Vicki Brice Iverson gave us some money through her offices of two hundred five hundred thousand. And that's what this agreement is for the rural fire protection districts to use that money to purchase some wildland or some fire equipment. I think it was all equipment related, so. Do you guys wanna summarize what that stuff supposed to be?
Sure.
So basically, it was fifty-five thousand dollars in personal protective equipment, basically wildland gear. Uh, three hundred and ten thousand for wildland apparatus. Eighty-five thousand dollars for radio equipment, seventeen thousand for cargo trailer, thirty-three thousand dollars for fire equipment, for a total of five hundred thousand.
Did you say any engines?
Three.
Three.
I think that was the, the hope to get three of that three hundred and ten thousand. Wildland type sixes, so we're also hoping through the Fire Marshal's office, they're also gonna, they're purchasing between seventy-five and a hundred apparatus around the state. We're hoping they can give a couple of those as well, as something like that.
So this coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund grant was something we put in for well over a year ago, about a year ago. And it's kinda off and on as to whether we thought we were gonna be able to pull it off or not. And wound up that, uh, rural fire departments did qualify. And so five hundred thousand dollars spread out among all RFPD or RFDs in Lake County.
Yep, and I think County Fire Defense Board will be the one who will want to count this dispersing that equipment.
What's that, Mark? Hello? Good morning. Does this work? You okay? Morning, Mark. You're on. Speaker. We're just talking about the, uh, uh, CSFR. Or a, yeah, grant agreement with Vicki Brice Iverson to the, uh, rural fire department.
Yeah, it's a half million.
Half million.
Half million, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to, to further clarify, the reason that this is available for purchase of a capital equipment like that is the state overall chose to trade out this money for a revenue reduction. And so, once they took that action, it allowed all of the senators and representatives to use this money for any governmental purpose.
Correct.
So if, if they don't have the same water broadband responding to the public emergency restrictions like we're trying to match up with, um, unless we take the revenue reduction, so.
So they can use it for anything?
Yes, and that's, remember, that's, that was part of our like, boy, this doesn't meet some of those federal guidelines on. But once the state said it's okay, we're gonna take it all as a revenue loss to open it all up, so.
Commissioner, is any other comments on this?
No, thank you for, Vicki Brice Iverson.
Yep, very much so.
So, uh, if there's no other comment, is there a motion to approve this? So who?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Williams.
For five hundred thousand for Vicki Brice Iverson for the rural fire departments.
Okay, is there a second?
All second that, Commissioner Williams.
Okay, and just for the notes, this will be contract number eight-one-six-five. Okay, any further discussion? Uh, hearing now will proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund grant agreement to Lake County for five hundred thousand dollars, uh, using contract number eight-one-six-five identified by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
While you're up there, let's talk about, uh, our droughts.
Sounds good. I guess, um, as we all heard last week during the water master meeting that, uh, we probably ought to declare a drought. We're not seeing a lot of moisture, even though it is currently raining today, but that's not gonna fix our problem. Um, I did print off the March seventh water conditions report, if you guys wanna look at that or review that if you haven't seen it. So, um, it sounds like, what I'm hearing is we're worse than even last year. With our reservoir storage and our lack of snowpack, so we're worse off than we were even last year.
Pigeon reservoirs at about eleven percent capacity, Thompson reservoir for the Silver Lake, uh, water users at four percent capacity. Snowpack's at about seventy-four percent. Lake County's received twenty-five percent of normal precip, this, for this time of year. Uh, we started off great in December, but, uh, we've had virtually nothing ever since. When we met with the water masters, uh, what was that, last week? They, they made a recommendation that we move forward with drought declaration as well. Anything else to add?
I don't have anything else.
So before this is resolution, uh, twenty-two, twenty-two-two dash zero-two-C. If we're in favor of that, we'll entertain a motion.
Williams, I'll go ahead and make a motion that, um, we approve, uh, resolution twenty-two-two, um, dash zero-two-C in declaring a drought for Lake County.
Second.
Okay, it's been, uh, we have a motion, a second, to approve drought declaration for Lake County identified by resolution twenty-two-two dash zero-two-C. I'll just read the proclamation. Now therefore, fee proclaimed by the Lake County Board of Commissioners that a local disaster is declared within Lake County. Lake County drought emergency management plan has been implemented. Pursuit of ORS four-oh-one point zero-three-two, we find that appropriate response is beyond the capability of Lake County. We are declaring a state of emergency for the purpose of assessment, evaluation, and acquiring the ability to provide appropriate available resources. The request, the Honorable Cape Brown Governor of Oregon declare a drought emergency for all of Lake County under the provisions of ORS four-oh-one point one-six-five due to severe continuing drought conditions beginning at this time and continuing for an unknown period of time. And direct the Oregon Department of Water Resources to make available in Lake County temporary water, temporary transfers of water rights and emergency water use permits and use of existing right option agreement and other federal and state drought assistance and programs as needed. This proclamation shall take effect immediately from and after its issuance, which will be here today. So any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
That should be for you.
That does.
Alright, good. Okay. Mr. Hawk.
Morning.
Morning. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Um. Do the ripper first, maybe?
Sure.
Um, as discussed in our road advisory meeting, um, we recommend this, uh, purchase model-specific ripper for, um, this will be law number twenty-seven grader, um, cost savings over new attachment. We've, uh, been updating our equipment with these rippers in the effort to carry the, as you guys know, the walk and roll attachments when we, um, later gravel roads. This is a brand name and a specific single source, so rule exemption number eight. Uh, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. I do have, um, in the capital budget to afford for two of these this, this current fiscal year until June, so, I'll probably come back to the table here and provide another one for the next and the last machine to upgrade.
Alright, Commissioner, is any discussion?
Oh, pretty straightforward from, from Mike, really.
Yeah, this is a used ripper.
It's used, this, the attachment is used, but they, um, they re-bush all of their connections, so it, it's like, cert- certified, I guess, certified used equipment. But they are model-specific and it takes us, you know, we're, we're kind of consistently researching where we can get these from and. This one's built.
Alright, um, do we have a motion on the table?
We'll make a motion to go ahead and purchase the ripper for the road department.
Is there a second?
Trying to find the unmute button, uh, I'll second that motion.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve Caterpillar one forty-three H ripper attachment for the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars using rule eight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, second item, uh, that I added, I, I just, I guess I just wanna make a, a mention here on the, on these delineators and on the, on the herbicide as well. Added because right now in the times that we live, uh, vendors aren't too comfortable with extending their prices out, um, any longer than, I notice here, this actually says two fourteen, but the sales quote date should be three fourteen. I'm not sure why that date could change, but at any rate, these delineators, um, we have, uh, plans to install, um, on all of our surface treatment routes as we upgrade in North Lake County. So Christmas Valley Highway from Chevron out to thirty-one and Fort Rock, uh, from eleven mile corner to thirty-one. These posts, uh, we bought the same thing last year, um, they come pre-punched, so it helps us a great deal in putting targets on and speeding operation up on the road. Makes for a much more efficient process. This is a, uh, also a brand name and a single source, um, contract from, uh, Traffic Safety Supply, which is a Northwest vendor for this material.
Okay, Commissioner, is any discussions? Hearing then, do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, um, the ODOT type-one delineators.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Uh, it's a new seconded purchase, for the purchase of delineators for North Lake routes in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, Chair, uh, our, um, real quick, did we have, did we need a rule exemption for the, uh, uh, the, the purchase of the Caterpillar, uh, ripper attachment?
Yeah, we use rule eight.
Okay, I didn't know if we had stated that we were using rule eight or not, okay.
I did a summary, yeah, well, and I put it in the motion.
Just wanted it in the minutes, that was the rule we were going under. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item, last item for the road department, um, again submitted this morning because of, uh, value of this material and how hard it is to find, tho- those, they probably don't have a copy of all these, do they, Almy?
The guys are out of town, only have one recent.
Oh, okay, um, I should've sent that to them too, so they're not looking at the two quotes that we got back that apologized for herbicide requested and not being able to get them because of limited supply?
I can verify that in a few minutes.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not looking at those.
So, so I'll, I'll just summarize for you so that you're aware. We have four vendors that we tried to get prices from, uh, two of them sent, um, correspondence back. I'll, I'll just summarize here and paraphrase, um, one with Will Borellus and the other one with Valley Ag. And for the most part, um, they're unable to bid this request this year just because of the uncertainty of availability of this material and the cost fluctuation that they're experiencing, um, uh, when we would actually take it. So, um, it actually says right here, certainly this is an unprecedented year from a supply chain standpoint. Are still interested in future bid, but, um, they can't seem to procure this material themselves, so two vendors. The other two vendors that we did get quotes from, one being Helena, Helena, um, Ag Enterprises, and then the apparent low bidder, which is Nutrient Solutions, were forty-five thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. That, this came in this morning, so that's, um, why I added it. They, they typically will extend their prices out. In the past, it wasn't too big a deal because there was enough material apparently, but now maybe not so much, so.
Did you say this bid was good for four days?
One of the vendors, I'm not sure that this was the price yet, I think, I think that was Helen Ashley that said it was four or five days. But that's kind of why I waited till last minute to add it. I wasn't even sure that we were gonna, as of this morning when we came into the office room, we actually only had one valid quote. The other three, we weren't sure, and then he sent his in this morning, so, um. Low bid, low quote, if you will, forty-five thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy cents to fill the material needs for our herbicide program for us to spray right away, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussions?
So Kevin, you're recommending we go with the low bidder, Nutrient Solutions?
Yeah, because, um, they're, they're, literally in this case, we don't have the material to carry out our program now. The option of waiting to see if it gets better is kind of not, not even a, a good theory. These vendors that, that gave us prices said they're not gonna hold them for that long, so, um, we, we're, this year is a strange year for procurement of supplies and materials and, um, this is, uh, I wanna say thirteen, twelve or thirteen thousand dollars more than what it was last year. And it's the way things are, costs of done business, there's, I don't, I don't know who else to reach out to to see about better prices, so.
Probably not gonna happen.
I, I mean, actually, Office Manager Christie, um, is tasked with, you know, contacting all these people for this material list. And like I said, um, two of the vendors sent back, I just rather the, you know, can't fly, okay, we're very limited.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing then, do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid from Nutrient Solutions for forty-five thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
Is there a second?
Okay, the second is to approve the bid of Nutrient Solutions in the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy cents as presented. Can't a second? Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
If I, if I had thirty seconds, I'd, uh, not to bring any more doom and gloom, so speak to the meeting, but I just wanted to kind of brief you gentlemen on what I'm gonna experience here moving forward with both our oil, uh, quotes that we hope to get back this afternoon and, uh, uh, also line, line painting material. Um, line paint, line painting material is, uh, gonna be somewhere over sixteen to eighteen dollars a gallon. So, material is very, very expensive, um, just for your information, just to share that with you. So we get our quotes back for our surface treatment plan this afternoon, and then we'll have to evaluate true needs at that point, so.
Yeah, it'll be an interesting quote. Quotes.
Um, that's, that's really all I have. It was just the cost of materials here moving forward and the cost of fuel to do businesses. That'll be, um, a challenge, for sure. Be very expensive.
Alright, we thank you, Kevin, appreciate the, uh, updates and, uh, getting those bids fixed.
Thank you, Kevin, very much appreciated.
Yep, have a good day.
Cheers.
Good job.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks for adding that in.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna skip around in the, uh, agenda here. And the next item we're gonna go for is the Christmas Valley Water Herbide Discussion. So, previous meeting, we moved some money around. I think Anne wanted to join us on this.
I just texted her.
Okay, thank you. Just, uh, a refresher while we're waiting for Anne. We had a total of two-point-seven million dollars of, uh, ARCA funding coming from, uh, representatives, uh, Reski and Senator, State Senator Lithcom, and also had some, uh, direct dollars given to us from the state. Uh, we currently receive seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand of the direct dollars. I believe we're expecting another seven-fifty around the first part of May, which gives us a total of two-point-seven. We, last meeting, we dedicated, uh, five hundred thousand of Reski money and five hundred thousand Lithcom money towards the North Lake Water Project. Uh, we zeroed out the fairgrounds this time, and, uh, that gave more money to Christmas Valley and Paisley Water Projects. So we currently have approximately nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand, a little over nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars available for the Christmas Valley Water Project. Uh, Christmas Valley Water Project, uh, we have Jim Strong in the room here. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, the total, uh, Christmas Valley Water Project, uh, pipe replacement and the whole Marion is north of fourteen million dollars, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, based on today's estimates and material quotes and so on.
Okay, so. Yep, it probably keeps quiet.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Uh. Jim? So, uh, Christmas Valley has put a proposal to us, uh, of, uh, supplies that they desperately need. The first one is auto, uh, reed meters. These are new boxes and piping and software that, uh, would, uh, also come with installation and testing. Didn't get it how many, but, uh, this would be in the amount of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. They're in need of a generator for an existing well. It'd be a forty horsepower, three-phase, uh, generator, includes wiring and, and the building, et cetera, for sixty thousand. Uh, service truck, it'd be used one ton with utility box, about sixty thousand. And additional pipe installation, twenty-five hundred plus feet of pipe, which is very expensive right now. And that's, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. We have an engineering and administration fee of fifty thousand dollars, which gives us a total of nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Is there any, uh, discussion on this?
Uh, just, I guess, uh, while we're waiting for Anne still, is there a, um, is there a number of how much of those dollars that we actually have available right now? Because I know we're still waiting on the second half of white money.
We would have to, uh, we have, have to still wait for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand of white money. So we have, uh, some money according to Anne. I'm filling in the blanks here for her, but, uh, uh, we could go ahead and get started with some of these purchases. And as, uh, May first comes along, we'll be able to get the redemption.
Alright, hey Darwin, actually, could you run and grab Anne? I don't know, just looking at her phone, much appreciated. Um, so, yeah, I was just kind of wondering if we could get a little ballpark figure of what we actually currently have available right now. Um, Jim, I did talk to you last night on the phone, kind of explained that, you know, we're still waiting for that second half of the white money. And it should be, you know, we should have it sometime in May.
He's confused.
That's kind of what I was hearing, was that I was kind of hearing.
Yeah, it's not white money, it's, uh, American Recovery Plan Act money.
Oh.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Yeah.
And?
So Anne, we, uh, kind of gave you a run-through of what Christmas Valley, the best course by district is proposing to use to purchase with nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the discussion points come up is, is what kind of monies are currently available? Because we still have, we have to receive, uh, seven-fifty, how would we go about tackling this list?
So we have, you know, we have seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand in hand of that direct funding that we received last May. Uh, Kevin and I were just talking too, remember, we did allocate some dollars to Christmas Valley Water District for purchase of materials. And so we need to get that reimbursement made. We have those dollars, the rest of that available. This is the first project that's coming open that is ready to go. If they need funds, we can start kicking out the rest of that, seven hundred thousand. We'll get the next seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in direct ARCA money in May. Um, I don't know how we're gonna get Lithcom and Reski's money in. You know, those are gonna go through different avenues, through SOED or through us, I'm not sure how that's going to happen yet, so. Then the next chunk of money we will see federally will be the white money. Thought that would happen this spring, treasury got hit with ARCA money and reporting, so it has become a backliner issue. Although I, it seems like NACO and WIR have so it has become a back burner issue, although I, it seems like NACO and WIR has signed off on the distribution formulas, which are very similar to PILT. So I think that said, they just haven't made the payment yet.
How much money did we have, uh, already planned for, that we planned?
That's what we were just talking about here in the hall. I thought that that, um, proposal was to help them with parts and pieces of, of valve bodies and things of that nature. And I thought it was not to exceed, I thought it actually was submitted as not to exceed thirty thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, and I, Kevin asked for that, Kevin, when I, I didn't want to make that first.
I'm almost positive it was not to exceed thirty thousand for the valve bodies and the sleeves and, uh, parts that she needed. Um, I should say that Water District needed for the intersection at Christmas Tree, it's Christmas Valley Highway in a co-op of sorts.
Yeah, we, that's what I remember in my mind, it, it was not to exceed the thirty thousand because it, there was, it seemed pretty, I, I believe Erica seemed pretty positive that she would be able to get the work done for well under that, but we went ahead and allocated that if needed. But it was not to exceed thirty thousand.
So, I would assume, uh, to stay within the nine hundred and twenty thousand, uh, that additional pipe may be where we.
I got some info. Okay, so, you know, what y'all were just talking about regarding your past action was of just authorizing to, uh, uh, provide the Water District productive thirty thousand dollars. And that was to undertake the project centered around Christmas Valley Highway, Old Lake Road and the Christmas Tree Lane. Uh, my understanding is, I thought the district had presented you with an accounting of that. If not, I will make sure that gets done. Um, in my mind, that's, that discussion is separate from the discussion of these ones. But I heard Anne just say something about reimbursement, maybe we could explain that to me a little bit.
Well, I just looked real quick, um, we have not provided that thirty thousand dollars to the Christmas Valley Water District yet.
So, is we have them?
No, I don't, I haven't seen it, I hope Melanie has, but we haven't seen that yet, so.
Okay, so reimbursing the district.
Yeah.
As opposed to the district reimbursing, accounting for that.
Okay, no.
That's why I was confused. Um, and by the way, Jim Strong, Christmas Valley Water District Board, I didn't feel like to do that, sorry. Um, the auto reed meters at four hundred and fifty thousand dollar tab, that's, that purchases enough, uh, auto reed meters that can be, uh, with the telemetry involved, that can be, uh, read from the district office. As opposed to workers driving by in their truck and then having to take it. And that provides enough, uh, meters to, uh, service all of our current customers that are hooked up as well, and both residential and, um, and commercial as well as, um, planning a cushion for the future hookups that we, you know, realistically anticipate. The, um, additional pipe installation, that three hundred grand takes care of, I believe, both materials and, uh, I believe the labor and so on to install them. And it kind of speaks to maybe what Kevin was alluding to during his presentation. It gets you less than a half pile of, that three hundred thousand dollar figure gets you less than a half pile of pipe in the ground. Yeah, um, we've got a couple areas specific, uh, specifically earmarked that we have our eyes on in terms of the most problematic, in terms of constant repetitive leaks up and down a section of pipe, that I think we'll be able to stand out on effectively. Um, the need for the service truck is, our current truck is a duly, and it's having a hard time making it down the narrow easements, uh, utility easements to get to the jobs. So, uh, anticipating the future, probably putting that on the market. Once we decide on a good condition used, maybe a fleet side bed to, uh, with the bus at all. I guess we're going for a box truck.
Okay, so, uh, with the ARPA dollars, we have a total of two point seven million. We have identified that we can support Christmas Valley with nine hundred and twenty thousand. Question that I have is, does the thirty thousand that we've already, uh, said to go forth with include that nine hundred and twenty thousand?
My understanding is the nine hundred and twenty, sorry.
We told them we had paid for that before we took up the nine hundred and twenty thousand, so I, I would say it would be in addition.
Okay, well then that, that will reduce, uh, that will reduce the Childcare's, uh, or Paisley is the remaining, uh, projects.
Right. Was it coming out of the same dollars? I don't remember, because that was several months ago that we.
Yep, thirty thousand.
Okay. Oh, we can make it to the nine hundred and twenty. I didn't realize it was coming out of the thing, oh, my apologies.
Yeah, we forgot to add that as a earmark.
From the district's perspective, this is the first we've heard of the thirty thousand that was earlier authorized coming out of the nine twenty. That's gonna be a surprise to us.
Okay, well.
So.
Surprise, so much fun.
Surprise.
Look, I mean, do we even know if it, do we know what it cost them? Maybe it didn't even cost thirty thousand for the valves. We don't know yet, because we haven't seen it.
Because the thirty thousand was, was just an estimate that was.
Yeah, up to.
That was parts and the potential labor, so they did that project three weeks ago or four now. Um, so, somebody just needs to get a hold of Erica and say how much did this actually cost? Yes, and just the, the cost for that project.
Right.
The, the real value.
Yeah.
But the proposal of that was before, I, I didn't actually know of the other Christmas Valley, not that it mattered one way or the other, I was just trying to get our project taken through.
And I, it, it should not take the full thirty thousand to do that project, is what Erica's told me. But we wanted to make sure that we had, we were allocating enough to cover it. Um, yeah, I, in all honesty, I hadn't even thought about the fact that it was coming out of that nine hundred and twenty, um, allocation based on, you know, the, the dollars that we actually have. But, uh, it makes sense and, um, and hopefully it won't cost a whole lot to do that intersection.
So, how would you guys like to move forward? Do you wanna approve, uh, nine twenty for today? And say that, uh, uh, pending on, uh, costs of the, uh, project at Christmas Tree and Christmas Valley Highway?
Really, what we're doing is, we're just increasing the thirty thousand to a nine hundred and twenty thousand in, in allocation in total. And we know, we recognize that we don't have all those dollars available to us yet, but we're just allocating nine hundred and twenty thousand total to Christmas Valley for all their water. And, um, and that, the intersection will be inclusive within the projects that they do. So, and we just need to give them some surety that nine hundred and twenty thousand is going to be allocated to the district. Regardless of the fact that we don't have the entirety of that money until May.
Mr. Anderson?
I'll make the motion unless somebody else wants to.
Go ahead, Mark. You've done a lot of work on this, I, I think you should definitely be the one to make a motion on this.
I'll make the motion that we allocate nine hundred and twenty thousand to the Christmas Valley Water Project. And that money will be given to them as we did it. Um, and then they can spend it how they see fit on that project.
Okay, uh, that's.
So, let me second that motion for discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is our discussion.
Okay, just real quickly, Anne, uh, wanna run over, run over this real quick. As we, as we get it, would, are we gonna be doing this as a reimbursement? Or are we going to be doing this as, you know, a direct deposit or allocation? I, I was kind of understanding we're doing it as a reimbursement.
I think we need to, like, sign a grant agreement and then come to that decision. And so, you know, it seems to me it'd be best to do it on a reimbursement. We have to report on how these dollars are spent, they're going to be a sub recipient of ours. So yes, that's going to be more.
We have to report on it, right?
Yeah, it's going to be much more clear if it's through a grant agreement on a reimbursement basis.
That, that's idealized.
And then we, you know, we, we pay weekly. They're not gonna have to sit on money for very long. So we can, we can pay this out as they're spending it quickly. So they'll have that surety as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, that helps clarify that for me. And, Mr. James, are you understanding of that process?
I am, and I got some additional info on the CV Highway slash Christmas Tree Lane Old Lake Project. And that additional info is, the county has not yet, uh, been invoiced. But, uh, and the reason for that is, we haven't received invoices from the subcontractors, all of them yet.
Okay.
We're still waiting on, um, an invoice from our part supplier and from one of the, uh, uh, contracting or subcontractors. So she's unable to provide that to you. And if she did, she'd have to revise it anyway.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So.
Yeah.
Perfectly fine, overall, okay? With that, with that, um, I think the motion's actually still good to go then. Just with that clarity though, that you provided Anne on the processes we don't deal with.
I may use like some, a template that we already have with the state and then run that through someone. Um, and then the Christmas Valley Water District Board, and then we'll, we'll be able to move, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, uh, to approve nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the Christmas Valley Water Project.
Domestic Water Supply District.
Domestic Water Supply District, thank you. Uh, for the amount of nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars as we get it and it becomes available, and it will be you, it will be paid out as, uh, those needed or requested.
As invoiced.
As invoiced. Okay, any final discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations to Christmas Valley Domestic Water Supply District. May I say something else, though?
You bet.
Um, I've only lived out there for
No.
Four years, and I used to sound like the code enforcement guy. Uh, I've lived out there only about four years, but I gotta tell you, from both the Water District Board, a lot of their customers, myself personally, um, it's refreshing to see so much attention paid by your county board of commissioners, all of you, Mark, Barry and James, to what's going on in the North End. We all realize, all of us in this room and those remotely, what the fastest growing segment of the county is. And clean, safe drinking water are four words that, um, anybody in government, uh, public county government, especially this one, have to keep in the front of their, their mind. Clean, safe drinking water. Everything else falls if you can't achieve that. So again, heartfelt thanks, appreciation, I know it's a lot of effort, and you put in countless hours, Melanie as well, all the county employees. So pass that on to me, Darwin, you're here, I don't want to ignore you, but pass that on, uh, from me personally as well as from the Water District, really appreciate it.
Yeah, and we're looking forward to, uh, Christmas Valley Water getting, uh, right sized. And hopefully we can have more, we can chase more funding in here in the future.
Right, and without going overboard, maybe we can welcome some more businesses such as Dollar General, but we don't wanna go overboard. All right, so thanks again.
Congratulations.
So thank, thank you for that, Jim.
Thanks, James.
And, and appreciate your comments, and I appreciate you being here in person today.
Right.
Thanks, Anne.
Yes.
We're gonna move on to, uh, Governor Johnson, amended order for sale of county properties.
Great, yeah, so.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna have to step off.
Okay.
Okay, sir, on your own, so have a great day.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, see ya.
I think this mic is on.
Bye, Mark.
So, I don't know, probably a week or so after, I came with the first order, um, Dave Knowles, um, founding assessor, sent that. There was one more property that was foreclosed on, um, through a separate deed, uh, twenty, twenty-two dash zero zero, zero four four three, uh, which is in your summary. This property was expedited, um, on the, uh, redemption, or sorry, on the foreclosure process because, uh, previous somebody had passed on and, um, it, it's an absolute wreck. And so, uh, the plight that it is on the community, um, as you're coming into town, just behind, um, Curiosity Corner, Commissioner, past Commissioner Winters', um, property there in the storage units. It's, it's a place right behind that, here's a bunch of pictures I took just the other day, sorry, James, you don't have them. Uh, today, but, uh, this, this property just needs to be added to the list, we'll try to get it auctioned, um, that first Monday in May, which is May second. And, uh, the hard part about this one could possibly be that, uh, there's, it appears, or, or at least as we drove by it, um, that there's somebody in it, and, uh, which is hard to believe when you look at the pictures, but, um, you know, not having, um, been very successful in, uh, in the past in evictions in a timely manner, uh, my recommendation is just to move forward as is with this property and hopefully we'll get it auctioned and let the next owner evict, um, you know, the current folks that are in there. Um, they're not tenants of ours, they're, they're very legally, um, and so, uh, we could serve them with paperwork and process, but beans were, you know, about seven weeks out from a auction and only three weeks out from, um, the publications or, uh, paper. Um, I recommend again that we just proceed with, put them on the list, we'll try to get it auctioned. If it doesn't auction, then we'll certainly get them evicted. Now, but I would, I would assume certainly this will get sold as is and the next owners will, um, work on that, um, eviction process. We, we've had greater success actually dealing with it that way. And actually, uh, giving people, um, you know, getting the property sold and then the next owner, um, evicted them. Anyways, that's it, just that one property. Um, I did update the, um, agenda summary to, to remove, um, the properties that wouldn't be sold. So this is a more realistic, um, number, figure that we would, um, probably see in the land sale of roughly, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand if all the property sold at the auction. Um, and, um, the updated, uh, attachment A, which is an amendment, I took off the properties that are, are not for sale, the ones that were in the previous spreadsheet, um, highlighted in black, uh, I removed those just. So when we put this on the website, it's just showing the ones that we will be selling, not ones that don't need to spark people's interest, so. But that, that's all I have, right now on this.
Any questions, uh, Commissioner Williams?
No, I'm good, um, I just, I think we should just go ahead and move forward with that.
I know this is a property that we've had complaints on.
Oh, a lot of complaints over the year, Shannon.
A lot.
A lot of complaints, and from the pictures, you can absolutely see why.
Yep.
So you guys can take action on that by tomorrow, it sounds like, is what normally would do. Are you meeting tomorrow?
We're, no, we're not meeting tomorrow, we can take action right now.
Okay, you wanna, you gonna make a motion, James?
Or you, um, my thing's not pulling up on my screen, um, so yeah, go ahead and make a motion, great, that's great.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the amended order for sale of county properties, uh, twenty twenty-two as presented. Is there a second?
Second that motion.
Okay, so with this motion, that will include the, uh, property that you're discussing here. Okay, so with this motion, that will include the uh property that you're discussing here. Any further discussion?
Um me.
Okay, all favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Darrell. Let's go to uh. Should we do next? The Oregon Health Authority Agreement?
We can do the Oregon Health Authority really quick, um and then we can do Melanie's uh cybersecurity policy.
Okay.
So, go with, really on the O H A thing, is that what you wanna do, Chair?
Sure.
Excuse me, sorry.
You bet.
Okay, um the, I, I sent this off, Judy and I went back and forth a little bit and we talked ahead and everything else. Uh this one provides the county with about twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars um for uh S T D. Um or as a, a treatment. Um. It's a, it was a little puzzling to me because it, it comes as, it's kind of a s- single source. It doesn't show previous allocation. Um and they need, the funds need to be sent, spent quite quickly, uh as twelve thousand dollars. Um and I wanted to know what they were planning on treating and spending it on, because we already have a uh S T D treatment program within public health. So I passed it on to uh Judy, I asked a few questions and then uh Ed and I went back and forth with emails. They're saying that they're planning on using those dollars on uh salaries. Um so if they're going to be using them on salaries, um I told them that I'd just like to see, you know, I, I need to see the expenditures. I need to see the uh, how those funds are being allocated. Um it's one thing, you know, Anne and I have had this discussion. We can see the dollars coming in. We can see them going to the health district, but we're not seeing how they're actually being spent and we need to have some surety as to how they're being spent. So they're still working on that. I believe this week Ed is uh, Ed came up against the timeline on Friday. Um haven't heard how that quite went yet. Judy did C C, Anne and I on several emails, went back and forth with the state agencies, wanting to know more about financials. And get some of those reports. Um I'm good with these dollars at the moment because um I've had quite a bit of documented um evidence and emails and so forth. Showing what they intend to be spent on and according to the uh agreement, those are appropriate expenditures. I just need to have the financials at some point and it's just one of those things that we need to continue to work on, make sure that we're getting that clarity and see that. They're actually spending on what they're saying they're spending or not.
Okay, well, I appreciate you uh talking with uh Ms. Cork about that. Alright.
Okay, uh I'll, if uh, if there are no questions, if you wanna entertain a motion, I'd be happy to make a motion on that.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
Um I'll go ahead and I'll approve the agreement sixteen ninety-five eighteen dash five uh with the O H A. Um which will result in additional al- allocation of dollars of twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-three. Um U S dollars to uh public health or sexually transmitted disease treatment. And prevention.
Okay, uh I'll second it. And then discussion uh in the document here, I'm not seeing the dash five part.
Billy.
Just for clarification.
Uh the, the document itself was, I, I believe that it was, the file was dash five. Go ahead, Melanie.
Yep.
So that it's in their records, that's the number because it's the original agreement and this is the bit that I'm in that.
Okay.
That's how they keep track of it.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Clarification. Alright, any further discussion? Here now, we'll proceed to vote. All favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Okay, we're up to the cybersecurity policy.
So, um Jay and I have been, have been pursuing additional cybersecurity for Lake County. We initially thought it was going to be five hundred dollars. After we did the required seminar, um it turned out the five hundred dollars is for. An audit of our system. So the guy administering C I S ransomware program said it, Lake County with our population are. We're looking about a thousand dollars for insurance. Um I'll let you guys know is that is a firm number. Um right now, after we did the cybersecurity um seminar for C I S. Our second step is uh cybersecurity policy. They provided the template, we filled it in. I had our I T group review it and they said it looks great. It's things that we're already implementing or planning on implementing and so they said go ahead.
Okay. We do the five hundred dollars, it's too good to be true. And uh cybersecurity is definitely a hot topic in today's world discussions. I'll entertain a motion if there's no other uh explanation needed.
I'm having a hard time pulling up that file. If Barry, if you wanna go ahead and make a motion on that one. Okay, but no really good report, Melanie. Thank you.
I think all we're doing right now is approving the cybersecurity policy. Is there a dollar amount attached with this?
No, this is just what Lake County is going to do to promote cybersecurity within our.
Okay.
Our organization.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the Lake County cybersecurity policy as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, all favor of the Lake County cybersecurity policy as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, uh how about approval of meeting minutes for three one twenty-two work session and three two regular session? You want me to do it?
Okay, gotcha. Sorry, I, I think I'm back with the button. Um no, I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve the uh work session minutes for March first and the regular session minutes for March second, twenty twenty-two.
Alright, I will second that. Any further discussion? Here now, we'll proceed to vote. All favor of approving the meeting minutes of March first twenty twenty-two work session and March second twenty twenty-two regular session, signify by saying aye. Aye. Could you say aye, Commissioner?
Yes, sorry, aye. I may not have hit the button correctly.
Okay, we're almost up to our time session here at ten A M uh with the trap range subject. Before that, uh we have Mr. Morelli in the room and I know Commissioner Williams is uh looking to move on to other meetings as well. How long will your discussion take?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. We'll, we'll entertain your discussion.
Okay, so this is just a quick update with the car removal and this pretty much only applies to the south end of Lake County right now, although it may. Work its way north of Lake with the same people. Uh originally I told you I wasn't going to enforce the. Derelict car portion of the nuisance ordinance until we had a cost effective means to remove it. Uh one resident, one tow truck driver is, has gotten the license through D M B to be able to um. Assess abandoned vehicle at under five hundred dollar value, which gives him the ability to remove abandoned cars without the, the lien process, because there's no title. What this means for a property owner is that they can declare their vehicle abandoned. Uh so i- in case somebody has a old vehicle or just completely junk vehicle on their property, they can declare abandoned. I can sign off on paperwork. Myself, or any of the sheriffs, any county official can sign off that, verify that it's abandoned and the tow truck driver would then. With the proper certification can appraise it at less than five hundred dollars, which makes it fit the criteria of abandoned. So we have one resident in town who's gotten, gotten that certification and through this process, he can uh remove vehicles. For, in some cases, less than a hundred dollars per car, at a cost to the owner of less than a hundred dollars. If gas prices go up higher, it could go up to a hundred fifty per car, but he's working on ways to keep that price down. My only concern with this is that there's, since there's only one tow truck driver in, in the county with this certification to appraise them. It would appear that the county is giving favoritism to one person. That being said, any licensed tow truck driver can get this certification through the D M B, just no one, no, no one else has. So I do not feel that this is showing favoritism to one business. The way I see it is that there's finally a cost effective approach to removing vehicles. Any other tow truck driver who's willing can get this certification and I will sign the paperwork for them, just as I will for this other gentleman. But at this point, we can remove vehicles now at, at cost to the owner for, in most cases, less than a hundred dollars per car, or some cases, a hundred fifty dollars per car. So if there are any concerns that commissioners have, I can answer now before I actually start to enforce this. So I have not yet sent any notifications out of begun to enforce this. I wanted to bring all this to you, to make sure we're in agreement that, that this is the right way to proceed.
So Jason, one more time, uh the tow truck driver determines that this is a abandoned vehicle.
The, the property owner consents to it being abandoned. Abandoned in this case on private property essentially means that the owner says, I don't have a title for this vehicle. I'm declaring it, I'm abandoning, I'm abandoning ownership and declaring it abandoned. Essentially, that's what it means. It doesn't mean that the same as it would on public road where a vehicle is abandoned. So the property owner must consent that the vehicle is abandoned, okay? The tow truck driver will also have a separate certification from the D M B that allows them to appraise the vehicle at less than five hundred dollars. That's the key to doing this with no liens and keeping the price down, is that it has to be appraised at less than five hundred dollars to qualify as a vehicle. So the property owner consents to this, tow truck driver will, will verify it's worth less than five hundred dollars and then I sign the paperwork, declaring it abandoned. Myself, or it could be a sheriff or a county official. It doesn't just have to be me, but I'll be the one doing ninety-nine percent of it, just by the nature of the job.
Okay, any uh, is there any uh things you're looking for when that request comes to you? Is there any level of uh approval? I mean, you're, you're just approving it?
As long as the property owner consents to this, you know, I think, okay, there, there's no scenario here where we're going to shake down property owners for their scrap cars. You know, they, if they don't consent to this process, now they're, they'll get an notification just like with any other nuisance violation, saying you're in violation, you must correct it. They still have the option to sell the vehicle on their own, to tell it themselves, to bring it to a scrapyard themselves. But all that's more expensive than what we're, because this, than this option. So they, they're not forced to do this. But this is the cheapest option, so it is the most likely option. But if the property owner doesn't consent to declaring the vehicle abandoned, then it'll proceed. Either with them finding another means to return it, uh to remove the vehicle, or they'll, they'll challenge it in court and it'll, it'll go to court and set. But this is not a mandatory, they're not required to use this route. It's just the most cost effective.
So where will this vehicle wind up with the tow truck driver?
In one of two things. He's, uh this tow truck driver has a triple trailer, he can fit three cars on it. So if a property has three cars on the same property, they'll remove them and go straight from there to the scrapyard. Uh if not, he'll pick up one and two cars at a time, bring it back to his property, uh which is commercially zoned and, and he has permitted, uh. He already has a permitted use for storage of these vehicles. Then when he has three vehicles, he'll take them. And he may store more of that, you know, but he's not actually storing a lot of his vehicles. He's just one acre property and it's zoned for a specific amount, so he'll. He'll be complying with that. Oh, if he's not, then I'll be enforcing the, the land use. But essentially, he's either gonna go straight from the property to the scrapyard or from the property to his property and then straight to the scrapyard. And I assume it would work the same way with any other tow, tow truck driver decides to pursue this, uh if they decide to pursue it.
Okay. Well, it's good that it has a three-part process there. The owner, the tow truck driver and the court enforcement slash sheriff's office.
There's no, there's no avenue for any tow truck driver to essentially store, scrap, not a lot of people. And there's no, and there's not an avenue for us to do the same thing. It's, there's no, there's no avenue for abuse here, as far as I can see. There's still competition allowed and there's checks and balances between the property owner, tow truck driver and my office or the sheriffs. So there's still multiple people involved in this process. Keep everybody in mind.
Commissioner Williams?
So, um I don't know if you're, are you looking for board consensus? Would that be all that you're really looking for today?
Mark isn't here. I just wanna know, I just wanna know your concerns. Um I can speak to him privately, but before I move forward. To enforce this provision of the nuisance ordinance, I wanted to make sure it was on public record that this is how it's going to work, so that.
Right.
If there are any concerns, it's, it's full transparency in how the process works, so that there, there's no questions always taken by surprise.
I think this is a very good direction. I think, I think this is gonna be good for all of us in Fort Lake County to make sure that we have an avenue for people to. To dispose of these vehicles and, and we have a process lined out that we understand, committed to the public. So um as far, I'm good with this, one hundred percent. Um I'd love for Mark to be kind of part of this too. Um I think uh Barry, if you're comfortable, you know, just giving consensus from the two of us today would be good, just to kinda get you moving, um Jason. But um, you know, come back uh within a couple of weeks or so and give us another update.
Just say, I, I can wait a few days until Mark is back, or I can start this afternoon. It's, it's, a couple more days isn't gonna change it. I can wait till October.
Right, right. Uh I, I just, I also think, you know, it's great, you giving this kind of an update, um you know, periodically is really good for the public too. And uh because I know people watch these videos and, and such after the fact and I think it's, it's just good for them to know what we're all working on.
And it's getting, getting closer to being able to, the, the same people working down the south end of uh Lake, uh Lake County are working on a plan to move up to North Lake as well. So I'll update you when, when next one's ready.
Okay, we are late on our time session, but uh we're very efficient here today. Uh next up is. Uh Dave McCarty with the trap range.
Morning, Dave. How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Good. Good seeing you. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I'm in Salem today.
That's, that's all good. I'm glad you guys are late because I was running a little bit late myself. Worked perfect. Yeah, so really what I guess I'm here today is I really, um I'm looking for consensus from the commissioners to move forward. The proposal was to, is to use the, the county land located west of Roberta Road. Um known as the old man camp. So it's west of Roberta Road, north of um Forest Bradley's scrapyard. And then south of the county shops there or state shops, I'm not sure. I think they're county shops there. As a potential site for a trap range. Um when we talk about trap ranges, um three things come into, to uh play. One is we need ground that's flat. Two is that we need ground that's accessible. And three, we need ground that's accessible to all modalities, whether a person be um walking on two legs or rolling on some wheels. We need ground that's accessible that way to modalities and we need ground that's accessible year round because of snow and so forth. So anything up the county or up the canyon, um that the city might hold is not accessible necessarily year round. So, we have some issues that come into play when you, when you start talking about um trap ranges or gun ranges. Noise ordinances, um whether we're in or out of the city limits as far as firing a, a weapon. And then, um, the other thing would be um safety zones. As far as this piece of property is concerned, uh we, being Kevin Serva, and I feel like this would be an ideal location. Um it's close enough to town that um it's economical from a fuel standpoint. Currently, the high school team uses Paisley Trap Range um for ten weeks out of the year. And that's quite inexpensive, but this would provide an economical location. Um the ground is flat, it's reclaimable, and it's safe. Um, one of the concerns that comes into play is what they call your safe shot fall zone. That's the distance that a, that a lead pellet will travel before it returns to the ground. And that distance can be regulated by the size of shot that is used. The, the range can be restricted, and in this case, we would restrict the range to nothing larger than a seven and a half. A size seven and a half shot will travel two hundred and six yards. And on this piece of ground, that would give us a approximately a two hundred yard safety zone. Wherever we put the range, we have two hundred yards for a shot fall zone. Plus an additional two hundred yards behind that, because this piece of property is approximately four hundred and thirty yards by four hundred and thirty. Yards, so we can locate a trap range inside of that piece of property. And accommodate for any and all safety issues that um there might be. We, there's a question of whether we need to get the sheriff to sign off on it, as being so close to town. And then we have to go through the noise ordinance stuff on that. Really what I'm looking for is a, a yay or an a from the commissioner saying, hey, we wanna move forward on this, we wanna investigate it more. Because in the era of COVID, I've learned, you don't go any farther than the first closed door, because things change, right? So, um, that's my spiel this morning.
So, uh Dave, I'll go ahead and start looking at the property on the uh Google Earth. And looking at property owners and whatnot, the county owns most of that area that you're talking about. There are a half dozen or so, uh point zero seven acre owners out there. That would potentially be uh in the line of flight of your shots. Your traps. Uh so, we'd have to add, you'd have to add that to the list too, of getting either a waiver. Or something from those landowners because of the, you know, steel shot and whatnot. Landing on their property and, you know, it's something for them to know about or be aware of before we can give approval. So, that will be another mountain to climb there. Because looking at it, uh it'd be, you know, two hundred and six yards is, helps tremendously. But depending on where you wanna lay it out, you also have potential to uh put shot onto other people's private property.
Correct.
And so, that will be something that you would have to look at as well.
Yeah. Guys, all, all those pieces, they're just point eight acres, Barry, you're absolutely correct, and they're just scattered throughout the entire piece there.
I don't even think, they're point zero seven acre, point zero eight acres, I think. So, very small properties, but uh they do not walk into Lake County. So that would be something that you, this, your group would have to uh look into as well. Maybe you don't need all of them, but you need the key ones to uh either give. I'm not sure what the correct process is, but it may take uh either a waiver or. Something where they're agreeing that their property is being protected, potentially affected, correct? That makes sense.
That makes sense.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, they, yeah, they, they might, you know, wanna do a trade or something, you know? It's not like it's one landowner with a whole bunch of little pieces, it's twelve different landowners or so. With twelve different little pieces, and it kinda makes that whole stretch of land somewhat unusable. And that's why it's, why it's not being used currently, I would imagine, because it's uh, it's just checkerboarded with all these other properties. But um, the uh, and even if they could just, like you were saying Barry, if they would sign off on a waiver. Uh where they allowed someone to shoot some birdshot or something over the top of their property or something. And they're not gonna come back and go after any of the, the trappers, um the trap shooters. Um, that might be all you need, but it might need to be headed up by you guys and there needs to be some documentation on it, I think, just for liability's sake. Maybe, but I, from the county's point of view, I don't have a problem with it, in fact, I think it's a great location. Um, sounds like you've done your homework, I was talking to uh Kevin Serva about it. And uh, you know, yeah, it's, it's a good location, and it's way better than the previous location as far as out by the airport. Um, I might not agree with the FAA, but um, you know, they definitely didn't want it there and it was uh. Quite a, quite a hassle, working with them to try and find ways of making it possible. It's a good location, if we can get those other landowners to sign off, because those properties that they have are next to useless, they can't do anything with them. And so, maybe they'd be interested in either doing some sort of a trade or working something out with you or with the county. But if we can get them to the table, that's what, that would be the goal.
Are there any grading rights on that section? Okay, so it's just sitting dormant right now?
You know, I think it's.
Go ahead, sorry.
I was just saying, Commissioner, that I think it gets mowed uh by the county as brush gets high and stuff.
Um as far as orientation, you know, some concern were raised about if we were in, orientated the range. Um from the fa- from the south facing north towards the county shops. And that, that shot carrier or that shot fall zone, you know, we would definitely be of. A safe distance away from the county shops, but we're, we can also change the orientation. Um, of the range itself to avoid any buildings in that direction. You know, ideally, ideally, it would be from the south to the north because of winds and so forth. But we could change that to more of a, more of a northwest direction. Or even if we wanted to, to flip it around completely and make the entrance from the county shop side. And shoot towards the south, we could do, um wouldn't be ideal, but like I said, I don't see that that's a concern. We have enough land in there that we can change the orientation of the range if need be. So I, what I'm hearing from, from, from the commissioners is you guys think that's a good location. I need to contact private landowners, um get some agreement, something signed off there. And then bring it back to you with more detail.
Yeah, and if you need help tracking some of those people down, getting addresses or, you know, um information to get ahold of them. Either Dave Knowles or Darwin would be the perfect people to talk to about that. And um, you know, I think that just for public's clarity. Uh, the, and, and for our county employees that work at the county shops up there, um up to the north. Is it my understanding, um Dave, that uh trap shoots in Oregon, the preference is for them to face north?
It is, because that way, you run into sun issues. Um with, if you face them other ways, you're gonna have sun in your eyes, where if you're facing north, um you don't have the sun in your eyes. But there are also prominent winds here come out of the south, and that affects the flight of the, of the trap themselves. So.
And so we were looking at the, the trap range over in Klamath County. And it was interesting because theirs actually is uh pointed almost like directly angled towards uh Highway ninety seven. Um, so, you know, though, I think that was a concern for me, was having our county shops somewhere in the line of fire. Um, you know, wanting to make sure that there was enough buffer and safe range there, that we're not gonna have any problems. So, you know, pushing that back on, at the back of that property as far south as possible. Um is obviously, um you know, the preferred preference. And um, and just making sure that we have enough, enough distance there to work with. So as you're kind of going through and contacting property owners, kind of keep that in mind. I had gotten on to map and I think Barry, you had done the same, gotten on there and done some measuring. Looking at those distances between, you know, Forest Bradleys and the county lots. And making sure that there was enough distance there, so we just wanna make sure that we kinda go forward, that we're keeping those, those things in mind too.
Yeah, and there are some, there are some creative things you can do. Um, I, there's a trap range in Vancouver, Washington, that is totally in a residential neighborhood now. And um they have a dirt berm pushed up around the, the exterior of the trap range. And then they have curtains upon pools behind that dirt berm, and then they light it at night. So they're shooting in a residential zone at night. Um, and it's pretty cool, but then I've seen other ranges where they take the same idea and they'll berm up dirt. And plant trees, and so that their range is encased by trees. And you know, a, a good windbreak out of trees on that north end wouldn't hurt anybody. Yeah, um so, there are some creative things we can do to.
May help with noise too.
May help with noise and um, you know, create some habitat, but then also make it, make it safer.
Very good points.
That soil is pretty tough, a lot of clay, and uh it's gonna be hard to grow a tree, but unless we break some soil in.
I was saying maybe Russian olives. They think they grow it anywhere.
They'll grow anywhere, right?
So, yeah. Alright, well, thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it, appreciate the work you do.
Come back to us when you find more out.
I will, thank you.
It's okay, thank you Dave. Alright, uh our final uh topic is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I'll, I'll bring up one thing.
Okay.
I knew it.
Just because, listen, I like to stay in meetings longer than it takes me to drive to them. Talk it up with your friends, family, and anybody else, the Christmas Valley Parking Rec is gonna have their monthly playdays. It'll be a five part buckle series, the second Saturday of each month, April through August. And uh we're eighty five percent of the way certain that we're gonna have a um. Uh barrel race, jackpot barrel race, uh tentatively gonna be in June. And uh I'm getting a lot of um goodwill and donations from both the, local businesses up there. As well as um private persons, and uh we just signed up yesterday a business that's actually located in the pine. That's pretty enthusiastic, so tell uh anybody you know that likes to pet horsies or watch them on TV, come on up. You can either participate in the playdays or um at least come and watch.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Strong?
Yes, sir.
Any other public comment? Only are we good? Civics recovery?
Hey, thank you Dave, um really appreciate you being here and good project. And uh Jim, safe drive home, okay?
Yes, sir.
I'll see you guys when I get back from Salem.
Alright, thank you James for all you're doing up there in Salem, and Mark as well. Yes, uh busy, busy times up there.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we got a lot knocked up today, so.
Yeah, it's really good, and uh we'll give you a full report when we get home.
Okay, uh meeting is adjourned.
Thank you guys, thank you Melanie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh my goodness sakes, so. We need to keep Christmas Valley parren grounds in mind for.
The rodeo grounds.
Rodeo grounds.
I've got, pardon me, I've got an iron in the fire.
Okay.
Um, I've been working with this business already on since November, so, okay, I've got something.
With business, so we're good.